All right. Uh, me too.
Planning Board. It's Thursday, October 20th, 2016, and the opening statement is as follows. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the 2016 Agenda Resolution of the Regularly Scheduled Meetings of the Princeton Planning Board. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and is to be maintained throughout the year by transmitting a copy of such schedule to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and Comcast Media. A copy has been filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the ninth day of December 2015. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution appeared in the November 13, 2015 edition of the Princeton Packet. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Byrd?
Ms. Capazoli?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Ms. Cermillo?
Here.
Mayor Lempert?
Yes.
Ms. Spurle?
Here.
Mrs. Trotman?
Here.
Mrs. Ullman?
Here.
Mrs. Gunning?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Mr. Williamson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you very much. There are a few announcements. The planning board meeting, the regular planning board meeting of November 3rd has or will be canceled, and it will be replaced with a scheduling of Princeton Neighborhood Character and Zoning Initiative focus groups. So, on the 3rd of November, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., Princeton community professionals will be meeting with our consultants, that is, architects, landscape architects, realtors, and so on. And on the same day, that's the 3rd of November, from 7:30 to 9:30, there will be a meeting for Princeton residents with the consultants. On the 10th of November, there will be a meeting with the consultants for Princeton Boards and Commissions, so, and all of this will be posted on the website. Does anyone have any other announcements? Anyone? Any reports? No? Well, let's get started. We have a very full meeting agenda tonight. The first hearing is Charles Yedlin. This is preliminary and final major site plan with variances. It's for 900 Harrington Road, Block 901, Lot 21. I'm going to ask Mr. Solo if he'll start us off by outlining what's happening.
Mr. Solo, do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully in this application?
I do. Thank you, and good evening. I'm going to be using an exhibit. It's the overall site plan for this development sheet number four. I'll label it as PB1. As you indicated, this is a preliminary and final site plan with variance application. The subject property is located at the southwest corner of Harrington Road in Mount Lucas, and let me orient you. North is sort of going up towards the left. At the top of the map is Harrington Road. To the right is Mount Lucas. At the bottom is Old Orchard Lane. The site itself is surrounded, to the west, a variety of offices, some retail uses. To the north, across the way, that's Princeton House, which is a medical facility. Across Mount Lucas to the east are single-family residences. And then, on either side of Old Orchard Lane, to the south, is a townhouse development called Old Orchard. The plan before you is to demo the existing buildings. The current site, it was the home for SAVE, which was an animal rescue and shelter and kennel. And they have, if you look at the plan, you'll see a variety of buildings scattered throughout the site. They will be demolished and replaced with a new two-story, 25,000-square-foot building, and that's shown here in the center of the site, and in gray, to give you an idea of its size. 125 parking spaces will accompany the building, and the parking surrounds the building as well. There's a storm basin as part of their stormwater management plan, and that's located at the corner of Harrington and Mount Lucas and this general area here. And then, there will be additional sidewalks and landscaping, which show up on the landscaping plan. There is a small emergency generator pad and trash enclosure located in the northwest corner of the site, adjacent to the other office buildings as well. And a six-foot wood fence along the southerly property line as part of a buffer for the Old Orchard development. This property is in the S2, the Service 2 Zone. There are three variances that are associated with this application. The first is for side yard setback, where 60 feet is required, and 19 feet is proposed for the emergency generator, and 20 feet for the trash receptor, and again, that's located here in the northwest corner, with the adjoining use being some parking and driveway for the office buildings. There's a requirement, 10B283, to have two loading spaces, given the size of the building, and only one is being proposed. That one being proposed is located here along the southern line. You'll see in the reports regarding the loading area, I think in general, most of the advisory committees and the staff were in support of the variance. In my report, we questioned whether we really need the loading area. It's probably, and we'll hear some testimony from the applicant, mostly vans and UPS box trucks that will be pulling up and probably utilizing existing parking. The loading area is close to the residence. The third variance is from 10B284, which is the parking stall size, 9 by 19 is required. And the applicant has a few spaces that are compact, 19 in total, and they will be 8 by 16, and a variance is needed for that as well. Currently, the site has two driveways, one out to Mount Lucas and one out to Harrington. Those will be replaced, and just one driveway that lines up with the Princeton House driveway to the north is being proposed. There's a traffic report that was submitted. It results, it indicates that this development will result in a total of 275 daily trips and 39 peak trips. The Board's traffic consultant, Brian Stankas, who is here if the Board has questions, has requested some additional information on the peak hour traffic. He points out that the 39 may be a little low. Of the 125 parking spaces, I did want to point out that I mentioned the 19 compact spaces that are located off of Harrington Road or facing Harrington Road. There will also be priority parking for low-emission vehicles, and there are four of those. If you're looking at the plan, they are labeled LEV stalls, there are two here and two over here. There is an electrical vehicle charging station, again, located here in the northwest corner of the site. Did I get that right? Yeah. And then, finally, one of the parking spaces will be used to provide space for two motorcycles. There are sidewalks on the north side and south side of the building as well. The staff reports indicate we'd like to see sidewalks on all four sides. I will point out that when we go over the SPRAB report, they did not endorse that idea and thought that the two sidewalks were adequate. There's a bike rack proposed also in the southwest corner right here. We've asked the applicant to indicate how many bikes that that will accommodate. As part of the construction of the building, the parking lot, and the detention basin, 150 trees, ranging in size from 3 inches to 35 inches, will be removed. The applicant has submitted an arborist report, which concludes that 102 of the 150 are viable, so that there are a number that are either dead, dying, or in some form of decay. The plan itself calls for planting 61 trees on-site, and the applicant is proposing to plant 50 off-site, which would comply with the ordinance requirements. The planting plan also includes a number of shrubs and ground cover as well. The Board's landscape consultant has suggested that some of the shade trees that are proposed -- oh, some of the shade trees that are to remain are ash trees. He's concerned that they may succumb to emerald ash borer, and recommends that a plan be put together to deal with that as an issue. He also recommends there's a 35-inch Catawba tree, if I'm saying that right, located over here, that he suggests be preserved. The Shade Tree Commission recommended preserving that tree, as well as a larger elm tree. The Board's landscape consultant also recommended that five shade trees be relocated closer to the parking lot or in an aisle to provide a little bit more shade for the parking lot and be in compliance with the ordinance requirements. He's requested that the applicant provide some additional landscaping near the detention basin, which again is here at the corner, to help soften the appearance of the detention basin. My report, I've asked the applicant to consider some additional landscaping for the emergency generator. And the trash area, I realize it's next to a parking lot, but concerned with views from Harrington as well. The stormwater management plan that is being proposed, the municipal engineer advises it does comply with the ordinance requirements, and our stormwater consultant, Mr. Scoopian, had a few technical changes that he would like made to the plan, and they should become conditions of the approval, should the Board so choose. We received a number of reports from the advisory committees, and I'd just like to briefly summarize those comments so that they're part of the record. From SPRAB, they recommended approval of all the variances. They suggested that the bike storage, bike racks be relocated to the rear, and that it be uncovered. They recommend that the Board's landscape subcommittee review the final landscaping plan. They endorsed the proposal to mitigate the removal of trees with the planting off-site. Suggested that some additional understorey plantings need to be provided to screen the Old Orchard area from the proposed development. And they, again, did not endorse the sidewalks on the other two sides of the building. The Shade Tree Commission recommends that the applicant adhere to the one-to-one replacement for plantings. They've asked him to consider additional adding of rain gardens. They've asked that he consider using permeable pavement, that a management plan be developed for ash trees, again, the concern being the emerald ash borer, and retaining Catawba, which on the tree plan is number 29, and the elm, which is number 113, which I don't have on my plan. PEC, or Princeton Environmental Commission, offered a number of comments, and their first was that the applicant tried to preserve and replace more trees on-site, that he provide covered bicycle parking, prepare a maintenance plan for stormwater, and consider utilizing more non-structural strategies. They've also asked that the applicant provide space in the trash enclosure for organic waste, that they consider maximizing southern exposure and shifting the orientation of the building, that he, the applicant should evaluate solar on the roof after construction so that it's a clearer picture with many of those tall trees gone, whether or not that's feasible. They recommend the applicant try to recycle at least 75 percent of the demolition waste, that they use FCS lumber, avoid red-list materials, use green building materials and finishes, and provide a shower for employees who bike to work. And then, the last advisory group was Traffic Safety, who asked that the applicant provide two bike racks, provide sidewalks around the building, extend a sidewalk out to Harrington Road, and relocate some of the handicap parking. That's a summary of the staff reports and advisory committee reports, as well as a very brief summary on the application. Alina Farrar is sitting in for Jack West, our municipal land use engineer. Derek Bridger, our zoning officer, is here, and I mentioned Brian for traffic. If there are questions for me or the staff, we'd be glad to answer them.
Did you want to swear the stamp in?
Yes. May I swear the two of you in?
And Brian?
And Brian. To the extent you're providing testimony, do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully? Just state your name and respond.
Brian Stankas, yes.
Alina Farrar, yes.
Derek Bridger, yes.
Are there questions for Mr. Solo, or any? Yes, Jenny?
So, there are conflicting opinions about the sidewalk on the two sides, and I was wondering if there's a standard for that. I know I was on the Traffic Safety Committee, and it seemed safer to have a sidewalk on the side of the building where their cars are parking, but I, and I don't really know if it's usual to have cars parked and with no sidewalk in front of where the cars are.
I think from a safety point of view, we just thought it was better to have people walk on a sidewalk than in the parking lot to the entrance of the building. That's where our mindset was.
But is it acceptable not to do it? I mean, I don't know if that, if I've seen that before.
There's no hard rules. I mean, it's kind of up to the Board. That's staff suggestion that, you know, creates those pedestrian conflicts with cars in the parking lot.
And just to take the other side for SPRAB, they were more interested in having more landscaping to help soften the building. So, that's why there is no right or wrong. I don't know, Brian, if you want to offer from a traffic safety point of view something?
Our report, our report also suggests that the sidewalk extend along the east and west sides of the building for the reasons that they're excited.
Right, so it was really just balancing people walking versus landscaping.
Any news, David?
Just a couple of questions. I'm not seeing any way on the drawings that what the impermeable coverage is on the site. Is that something that's not governed in this? It's certainly not on the bulk table.
I don't think that the zoning requires that we have an impermeable coverage requirement for residential. I don't think it applies here. What applies would be stormwater management plan and the runoff from the site. And as with all sites, that stormwater will be collected in a basin and released slower than what it was before, so the actual runoff should improve.
Okay. And the other question I had is whether there's a cut/fill calculation that's been done? Is this going to be a neutral site, or is there going to be fill brought in? Because it kind of looks like the pad's being built up.
I think the applicant can answer that unless, Alina, you wanted to jump in, or we'll hear from the applicant on that.
Any other questions? All right, I think we're ready to hear from the applicant then. Thank you, Mr. Solo.
Thank you. Good evening. Tom Letizia, attorney with Pepper Hamilton, representing the applicant, Charles Yedlin, to my left here. Just for the record, notice was provided, and the required affidavits and supporting documents were filed with Ms. Catronio, so I believe that this Board does have jurisdiction to proceed on this application.
Mr. Letizia, I'm going to ask that, to the extent that you provide testimony, that you swear or affirm to testify truthfully?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. As was noted by Mr. Solo, this is an application for preliminary and final site plan, excuse me, to construct a two-story, 25,000-square-foot office building on a three-acre parcel that is adjacent to office buildings that Mr. Yedlin and his father developed decades ago at Harrington Road and Route 206. So, this is the continuation of their long-term development plans for this portion of the municipality. The project will constitute a redevelopment of the former SAVE animal shelter on the site, which currently has dilapidated buildings with a modern, state-of-the-art office building that incorporates many sustainable and green development features, which we'll describe for you in our presentation, both within the site design itself, as well as within the building construction. As was identified by Mr. Solo, the site plan is essentially variance-free, except for what we believe are minor variances related to setbacks for the emergency generator and the trash enclosure, and we will provide justification for those variances, as well as parking stall size related to the compact spaces. As was noted by Mr. Solo, there are a portion of parking spaces that are identified as compact spaces, which are sized at 8 foot by 16 feet, which are obviously smaller than the ordinance requirement of 9 by 19 feet. And finally, the ordinance would require two loading spaces for a building of this size, and Mr. Yedlin is only proposing one loading space for the type of users that will occupy this building. We believe one space is sufficient, and in fact, we can discuss that perhaps no loading space would be necessary. With that, I'd like to begin our presentation by first asking Mr. Yedlin to give some remarks.
Yes, Mr. Yedlin, do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully, and would you state your name for the record?
I do. Charles Yedlin. Good evening, members of the Planning Board staff and members of the public. I am Charlie Yedlin, the applicant. I've lived along with my wife, Shelly, in Princeton for over 35 years. I've been in the development and construction business here all of my adult life. Before we begin the technical portion of our presentation, I would like to spend just a couple of minutes telling you about my company's history of development and construction in Princeton. In 1959, my late father, Ben, came to Princeton and began a long and distinguished career as a developer and builder of quality homes and office properties. I began working alongside my father in 1980. Projects that Ben and I developed and constructed include those located on Sturgis Way, Riverside Drive, Lee Brook Lane, Robert Road, Lindwood Circle, Andrews Lane, Fulee Drive, Hardy Drive, Springdale Road, Reading Circle, Harrington Lane, and Old Orchard Lane, as well as the three commercial office buildings I continue to own and manage at 1,000 Harrington Road. Some of our office building tenants include Walter B. Howe Insurance, West Chemical Company, Princeton House Behavioral Health, Wickenden Associates, and Centurion Ministries, as well as other small businesses. I'm extremely proud of the contributions we have made to the Princeton community and plan to continue that tradition with the project before you this evening at 900 Harrington Road, the former home of SAVE. Many years ago, I became aware that SAVE was looking to relocate their facility to another location more appropriate for their operation. In conversations over time with SAVE, we both expressed a desire to have me purchase and repurpose the property. I've been working with my professional team for more than a year and a half, more than one and a half years, to develop what I feel is an appropriate redevelopment of that property. I took title to the property in August and would hope to begin construction in the not-too-distant future. I've kept the neighbors of the adjacent properties informed of my plans, and I think that you will hear from our testimony this evening that I am committed to continue being a good neighbor. I've prepared several slides of the existing 1,000 Harrington Road office properties for those, for those of you who may not be familiar with the area I propose to develop. The new project will be in keeping with the quality and scale of the other buildings along Harrington Road. So, if you, I don't know whether you turn or you...
They should have their monitors. So, Charlie, just before you continue, Mr. Porter, we'll mark this slide presentation as A1.
A1, and as you go through the pages, would you identify the page numbers so that if we need to refer to particular slide numbers or page numbers, that would be useful?
Page three. This is page three that you currently see on your monitor.
Which is from compliments of Google Maps, Google Earth. To the top of the page, you see Route 206. Diagonally going down from left, the upper left to the, to the lower right is Harrington Road. It intersects with Mount Lucas. If you were to take a turn on Mount Lucas to the right, you would head toward Princeton, and the next right would be Old Orchard Lane. On the opposite side, on the north side of, or the west, that would be the east side of Harrington Road, is Princeton House. And we, we, my father and I developed the three buildings at Harrington Road, the one-story, the two-story, the clock building, and the townhouses on Old Orchard Lane. Go to the next one, Jim? So, this is number four? So, this is a, an image from the, would be the north, the northeast corner of the intersection of Mount Lucas and Harrington Road toward the SAVE property. The road on your left is Mount Lucas, heading toward Princeton. The road to your right is Harrington Road, headed out toward Route 206. Number five, this is a view from Harrington Road of some of the existing buildings on the SAVE property that are slated for demolition. This is the existing kennel at SAVE, which will come down. This is the, actually, it's the farmhouse or the cottage, another building that will come down. Another, there are three main buildings on the SAVE property. This building will come down. As you can see, it's, it's actually falling down. And this is a freestanding garage that's in, in pretty bad shape, that's also coming down. It's a picture of number, I'm sorry, number what? Number 10. Of our one-story building on Harrington Road, Princeton House is more or less across the street. This is a view from the rear of the parking area. This is the area between the Harrington buildings, and behind us is the parking area, and then further behind that would be Old Orchard Village. This is the social area, between the one and the two-story buildings at 1,000 Harrington. People go out there, the tenants, they have lunch, and it's a social, to socialize at various times. It's a picture of the two-story building at 1,000 Harrington from, from Harrington Road. Number 10? Oh, 14, sorry. This is the two-story building, again, from, from the parking lot toward the building. This is a view from, sort of from the social area, looking in the rear of the property, across the parking lot, and see the tall-standed trees, and then behind those trees are some of the residences of, of Old Orchard. 16, and this is another view from the parking toward Old Orchard. This is, for those of you who frequently come up and down Route 206, this is our building. We call it the clock building for obvious reasons. And in 2010, I installed a, about a 60 KW solar array on the roof that... And in 2010, I installed about a 60 KW solar array on the roof that supports about 28% to 30% of the energy consumed in the building. That's...
Are there any questions for Mr. Yedlin? I'd like to call our next witness, Mr. James Kamalak, who is our civil engineer. Can you speak to him, Jim?
Yes, Mr. Kamalak, do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully?
Yes, I do. James Kamalak.
Kamalak, I always, let's say that again, so I can get my ear...
I was close.
Kamalak.
Sorry about that. Good evening, everyone.
Could you just briefly go through your professional qualifications? I know you have presented before the planning board in the past.
Sure. I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I have an undergraduate degree in the field of civil and environmental engineering from Rutgers University, the College of Engineering. I'm also a licensed planner. I've been qualified as both professional engineer and a planner before this board on other applications, and I've been practicing civil engineering and site planning for approximately 18 years.
Thank you. We accept your qualifications. Can you speak directly into the microphone? It's a little hard to hear you.
So as previously mentioned, this site is the SAVE animal shelter that is proposed for redevelopment with a permitted office use. The lot area of the property is three acres. It's located in the S2 service district. This property significantly exceeds that. Size minimum is 3/4 of an acre in the S2 zone. The proposed building is 25,000 square feet. It's an office building consisting of two floors of approximately 12,500 square feet. The parking area that's proposed to support the building consists of 125 parking stalls with a single loading area, as Mr. Solo explained, and the plan also includes, obviously, the parking, plus utility service connections, drainage improvements, stormwater management, landscaping, and lighting improvements as well. This is slide 20.
Was that number 19? Or where did?
That was 19. This is 20, and I'll try to keep track since I have it labeled as we go through here. As mentioned, this project does include several green development elements. One is an electric vehicle charging station, which is located in rather close proximity to the building entrance. We've also, in order to reduce impervious coverage on the property, proposed 15% of the stalls to be compact parking stalls. That is consistent with the borough ordinance of up to 15% for the exact same dimensions. Unfortunately, the township does not have an actual ordinance enabling compact stalls, but we followed what was permitted and approved in the borough on this particular site. We've also included low-emission vehicle parking for priority parking, again, near the main entrance, and two motorcycle parking stalls to include some diversity in the parking uses, as well as a bicycle rack, which would house and have the capacity for six bicycles. We've also included rather state-of-the-art LED site lighting fixtures with low-energy consumption and excellent performance. When we were looking at opportunities for sustainable elements and looking at photovoltaics and solar electric on the property, given the site characteristics and the trees surrounding the property, there aren't opportunities for expansive solar electricity. However, we did a feasibility analysis, and it was determined that a small rooftop system would be feasible, and we thought that to size that appropriate for providing power to the site lighting as part of this development would be a nice way to address renewable energy and having a photovoltaic element as part of the project to service the capacity and power demands of the site lighting fixtures. Additionally, Mr. Yedlin is investigating and taking a look at the existing structures and has plans to salvage some of the timber in the buildings and incorporate those in certain ways into the new construction, perhaps in the lobby, to have some remnants of the existing structures that were on the property previously, and also salvaging some of the stone that's either unearthed on the site, or some of the foundation stone possibly would be incorporated into the entry sign at the front of the property in order to have some longstanding element of the history carry forward. As part of the site design, we included native trees and landscaping plant material throughout the site, and we also incorporated various pods of wildlife foraging grasses and meadow grasses in certain areas in order to serve to decrease expansive maintained lawn areas and increase what habitat may be possible on the property. This site, from a stormwater and drainage perspective, is interesting. We have the ability to utilize capacity that has been available for quite some time in the municipal regional stormwater basin at Griggs Farm, and a portion, approximately half of the drainage of the site, will utilize that existing capacity. We see that as a benefit because the construction of onsite at-grade stormwater management facilities, in terms of their footprint, will be decreased, and it'll also help the township utilize that capacity that's been available for a while as part of this development project. Lastly, Mr. Yedlin is planning on including various green building materials that the architect, Mr. Schmidt, may mention later in the presentation in terms of building construction materials, and that, details of that were submitted on the green development This is slide 21. It's a similar rendering of the, it's entitled aerial map of the existing condition, similar to the aerial that you viewed before, and it highlights the subject property, 900 Herrentown Road, and the existing building footprint, as well as the lot lines for the adjacent properties, the Old Orchard Village Town Home Development that's to the southwest, just to give you some perspective. And then slide 22 identifies the proposed building, generally within the development footprint of the previously existing use for reference purposes here relative to the We've included slide 23, which is entitled overall site plan. And this particular slide gives you, it's a color rendering, and gives you a little bit more of a picture of the surrounding uses. Again, the subject proposed building is here in the center of the property, 90 feet by 130 feet wide. You can see the one-story building here to the left or the northwest, and then a portion of the two-story building that continues further towards the northwest on Mr. Yedlin's other property, the parking lot at the rear of that. The green circles are existing trees that currently exist on the site, as well as these larger green areas, as I'm highlighting here on slide 23. I don't know how to use the mouse, unfortunately. But from the exhibit, I can explain that the large, solid, green areas are wooded or forested areas, both on each side of the Orchard, Old Orchard Development, as well as on the other side of Mount Lucas Road. This slide also identifies the general proximity of the residential buildings on the Old Orchard, on Old Orchard Lane, and in specific, gives you an idea of the relative distances and rather significant distances from those buildings to this proposed building. As you can see, the building that's furthest to the right at 178 feet to the closest point of that structure. Secondly, 220 feet in the central portion of the slide to the proposed building, and then to the first edge, 148 feet on the structure to the left. And then the furthest extent, or the last unit of that building, would be about 250 feet away from the building. Additionally, we've identified the existing and proposed trees as part of the landscaping plan that would be installed as part of this project. And the lighter green circles that you see is proposed landscaping, the darker green existing trees, and then even darker green along the property line between Old Orchard and the subject property. We've highlighted what are evergreen trees that currently exist out in the field, just to give you a sense of some of the diversity of deciduous and evergreen trees that do exist out there under the existing screening condition. We'll provide some additional, you know, testimony as part of this, but along the southerly boundary line, we've highlighted on this slide, slide 23, a proposed enhanced landscape buffer that would be included as part of this project. Slide 24 is basically a more detailed look at the site plan and the proposed landscaping and trees. Again, the building is in the central portion of the property. The main entry is from Herrentown Road. At the top of your screen, previously, there were two entrances to this property, one on Mount Lucas to the right, and a second near the new entrance on Herrentown Road. Those entrances would be consolidated into one ingress and egress to the property to simplify the access, the existing access condition. The main entrance is near the entry drive, and as previously identified, the trash enclosure and recycling areas in the upper left-hand corner of the parking lot, and near that, we also have a proposed emergency generator that would be used when there is a power failure in that location of the property. I would note that they have been located in that area, which is within the existing building setback because of a design intent to limit and be sensitive to the residential boundary that's to the bottom of your screen. So as opposed to taking, moving those structures somewhere else within the parking lot that complied with the setback and possibly even have that more exposed to either of the roadway frontages, we thought that this would be the best location to really tuck it away. We can screen with vegetation around the perimeter, and it would be the best location, in our opinion, for those facilities because it's adjacent to an existing commercial property. It happens right now to be owned by the applicant, but in terms of trash vehicles coming in and out, and as well as operation of the generator, it would be at a greater distance from the residential development. There was some discussion in the staff reports as to the bike, the bike area, which is located on the plan in the lower left-hand corner of the proposed building. And at SPRAB, we discussed the possibility of providing a future bike rack opportunity if it was needed, really based on the experience and operation of the two buildings on Herrentown Road that Mr. Yedlin owns and manages. I understand that from time to time, there's one person that bikes to work, and that's been consistent for a very long time. So for that reason, we provided the capacity, a bike rack capacity for six bicycles on this particular lot, and additionally, we've provided this blue area at the lower part of your screen for a future expansion if that was needed and six spaces was not enough. It'll at least be allocated on the plan, and the location was shifted pursuant to a request by SPRAB so that these two elements can be next to one another and there's sufficient room for an expansion if it's necessary in the future. I'd also like to point out the sign location. There's a freestanding sign at the top of the page, just to the right of the entry drive that would be fully compliant with the ordinance requirements, and that, details of that have been submitted as part of the architectural plan. Lastly, as...
Excuse me. Could I ask you to repeat your testimony on the possible relocation of the bike, the bike area?
Sure. When we were at SPRAB, there was a concern that maybe someday, six stalls might not be, six bike spaces may not be enough. Could you put another bike rack in? We said, well, it's not going to get used because the other two don't get used, on the other two sites. But what we discussed and agreed to is that we would put an area that would be a future bike rack area that could be expanded, and so as to have those both in one location as opposed to having one in one area and a second in another area, both behind the building, we had discussed with members of SPRAB to shift it to this location adjacent to the loading area. In terms of the variance relief that's being requested as part of the application, this is slide number 26. Relief is requested pursuant to section 10B-283 for one loading area where two loading areas are required based on the ordinance. It's our view that based on this use and the anticipated loading needs in terms of vehicles that would be visiting the site, which would be limited to smaller box trucks, UPS trucks, FedEx, for example, that may visit the site once or twice a day, that one loading area would be sufficient for this size building. Secondly, pursuant to section 10B-284, as we discussed with the compact parking stalls, 19 stalls at 15%, eight feet by 16 feet. The reason for that would be to decrease the amount of impervious surface on the site, and this also matches and follows suit with the borough ordinance for compact parking stalls. Section 10B-246, as well as 271, 272, 283, and 284 for side yard setback for the emergency generator at 21 feet where 60 feet is required, and for the trash and recycling enclosure at 20 feet where 60 feet is required away from the residential development adjacent to the commercial lot next door. We felt that moving these away did provide a significant benefit and that there would be no negative impact at that location because it could be screened and even hidden more from the street frontages at that location. So in terms of the variance proofs for these specific variance requests, we see that in the C2 context, where the positive benefits far outweigh any perceived detriments, and do support several municipal purposes of zoning, including purpose A, to guide appropriate use or development of all lands in a manner that will promote the public health, safety morals, and in this case... morals, and in this case, we see it as the general welfare. And J, to promote the conservation of open space and valuable natural resources and in this case, again, the degradation of the environment, serving to minimize impervious coverage relative to smaller parking stalls. In terms of the negative criteria where the relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good of the zone plan, we feel that these requests are very consistent with the zone plan and the master plan, the overall intents, and have not identified any substantial detriments to these rather minor deviations. This is Slide 28, and we put together a couple slides just to hit the highlights on the various review letters and requests by staff and their consultants as well. And I'll try to run through these without duplicating them too much so that we can move through them quickly. Preservation of the 35-inch Catalpa tree near the Harrington Road entrance, which was the subject of several of the comments. The applicant will do that and modify the plan to preserve that tree. Revision of the plan to include the 2.5-inch caliper sizes and about four to five additional trees near and adjacent to the parking area. Relocate some of those trees as well in order to comply with the parking tree requirement that will also be provided on the revised plans along with Item 3 here, additional details for the fence and evergreen trees as required. Lastly, on this slide, I've indicated that Mr. Yedlin held an informational meeting with the Old Orchard residents last week and the applicant has agreed to include as part of this plan an enhanced landscape buffer along the southwest property line, as I mentioned before, subject to the review and approval of the Landscape Subcommittee. And that's the lower boundary line that separates the office building property and the Old Orchard property. Again, there are existing trees, including evergreen trees, but there are opportunities to further enhance this. And in addition, as mentioned by Mr. Solo, we have 102 regulated trees that will be removed and need to be removed on this property just based on the site improvements that are required. 52 of those trees would be replaced on-site in terms of one-for-one tree mitigation, which is the requirement. And then our plan indicates that 50 trees would be mitigated in an off-site manner pursuant to your ordinance. Payment can be made and off-site opportunities. Those trees can be planted at those locations on other properties as the town sees fit. In this particular case and in light of trying to achieve the best buffer between the building and the adjacent residential development, we've identified that those 50 off-site mitigation trees, we have a real opportunity here to utilize those, both on our site along that property line, enhance the deciduous trees, add evergreens in, further densify it, and also, as long as it's amenable to the Old Orchard residents, we can use up to those 50, amount of 50 trees also on their property in that open area that buffers the two properties. So the applicant is certainly willing to do that and incorporate evergreen trees, number one, as well as understory planting so that there's a high buffer and then there's a low buffer, basically in two tiers as required in order to achieve something that's satisfactory to both the neighbors and the applicant. In terms of some of the traffic comments-
Could I just interrupt with a question? There was a suggestion about saving an elm tree. You talked about the Catalpa.
The elm tree cannot be saved. Unfortunately, it's in an area where we're changing the grade, where we have improvements. We have curb and parking very close to it and several other trees in that location are being removed as well. It's a smaller 13-inch tree. The Catalpa is a 35-inch tree that does have some distinct features. So the Catalpa, we're planning on saving, but the elm not, and compensating for that.
And what about the arborist's comment about the ash trees that ought to be removed because the Emerald Ash Borer? What's your plan regarding that?
In terms of that, we have, and that's one of the bullet points here, but we can talk about it now, I think we have the same opportunity there with these, this reservoir of 50 trees for the off-site mitigation. Not only can we densify the buffer between the two properties, but what our plan was in concert with the arborist and the Landscape Subcommittee, if the board approves this project, we can work out the details of a strategy in order to identify the best way either to phase in and plan for if those trees become no longer viable and need to be removed, what the replacement would be and how that would be done. Or if a more near-term solution as part of this landscape plan is more appropriate, then the applicant would entertain doing that.
My understanding is that in terms of controlling the spread of the ash borer is that it's desirable to get the trees eliminated earlier so that they don't become an, I mean, I'm not an expert, but that was my understanding and I think that's probably the intent.
If I could jump in, I spoke to Dan Dobromowski about that and actually to Lorraine Cupchak, the town's arborist. And Dan agrees, I think, David, with what you said to remove them because he's convinced they're going to die. I don't think the Town Shade Tree Commission has formed an official policy. I think the suggestion to have it come to the Landscape Subcommittee to review it and at that time, maybe you can make a decision as to whether over time you replace them, which can be done through performance guarantee or maintenance guarantee, or to make a decision at that point and say, "Just cut down the ashes and replace them with something, you know, a native species." But if the board likes that idea, I would suggest we just sort of leave it because hopefully Shade Tree Commission, I think, is close to coming up with their recommendation. But as in a lot of things that may take them a while, I know in speaking to Dan, he just felt, "You're going to lose them and you're better off sort of replacing them." But I think that's something the Landscape Subcommittee would have a little bit more time and could review.
Yeah. I think it's important because there seemed to be a little discrepancy in terms of the number of replacement trees. I mean, the arborist was suggesting that the number of replacement trees would increase with the number of ash trees that were taken out. And if I understood what you just said, Jim, you sort of felt you still only had the 50 trees that you had to replace. So I, we need to have an understanding of if you take out the ash trees, do those count as non-viable trees which therefore don't need to be replaced or do they count as viable trees which need to be replaced? I think it needs to be-
Typically, what we've done in the past has been those trees that are viable and are removed as part of construction, building, parking, utilities, need to be replaced. If they're non-viable, they don't. The ash tree is a little bit different because they're not being removed as part of construction. And again, I think that could be landscape. The ordinance doesn't provide a lot of guidance for something like that because this is new. But typically, we've only asked for replacement of viable trees that come down as a result of construction. We don't ask if they're diseased or dying and the like. And the number always changes, so I would urge you not to set the number at 50 or 48 or 70 because what we've done in the past is the engineer has worked with the developer because sometimes some trees can be saved and some can, or stuff happens. So the final number will be determined probably through the municipal land use engineer working with the applicant to finalize it with the guidance from the Landscape Subcommittee. I think that's a policy in terms of the ash trees. We've never had that come up, but I know the way Jack's interpreted the ordinance in the past, it's just the viable trees that are coming down due to construction are what the ordinance requires to be replaced.
Yes, go ahead.
I was going to say that council's been looking at this shade tree ordinance and there's going to be a special provision specifically for ash trees. And we have the public hearing on that Monday night. But it looks like there's going to be some sort of replacement for ash trees, but it'll be at a reduced amount than regular trees.
Right. And I believe in, that I've learned in these deliberations about the Emerald Ash Borer that the contagiousness of it isn't that much of an issue because every tree is going to get it. And so it doesn't really help that much to take one down that's diseased. It doesn't really save the ones around it because every single tree is going to get it. But at least that's how I interpreted what people were talking about.
Yes, Ms. Omer.
Well, I think we ought to hesitate on this issue because if we're talking about trees that are currently viable but which we believe will die in 10 years, I think we're going to have a kind of problem coming up with a management plan. I think it's going to be difficult to tell an applicant that they must take them down and they must replace them when they are perfectly viable. I mean, why would an applicant then decide to do that? I really think maybe the Landscape Committee needs to sit down and think this one through because I don't think it's, it's both in this application and in the Princeton Day School has it in spades. And to ask the Landscape Subcommittee, which isn't a scientific committee, it's more of a aesthetic committee, to make a decision is a bit tricky. So I mean, I do think the point needs to be raised. I haven't a clue as to what the appropriate answer is at this point. I really think we need to think hard about it before we do anything. And I mean, if council decides that even if you take down viable trees that are going to die in 10 years, you have to replace them, I probably will have a fit myself, but we'll see.
I think, Ashley, why don't we continue with this application and keep all these thoughts in mind from the Landscape Subcommittee? Go on, please.
In terms of some of the traffic concerns and comments, there was a request for a possible need for further traffic study at the driveway exit to the property, obtaining traffic counts for that. We did have a discussion with this at SPRAB at the hearing and their conclusion was that they didn't feel as though a traffic study or traffic counts would be required based on the size of the building and the anticipated trips. We did some additional research in terms of the utilization of the driveway for Princeton House across the street and when the peak hour may be associated with that driveway as it might affect this one driveway that we're proposing since they're in the same location. And what they told us was that pretty much the in-and-out peak activity is at the time period of 6:45 to 7:15 in the early morning, which is somewhat before typical office use building, which we would anticipate more of 8:00 to 9:00 o'clock. And then also in the afternoon from 2:45 to 3:15, which is, that peak is also offset from what we would anticipate, the peak from an office use in the order of, you know, 4:00 to 5:00 o'clock in the later afternoon. So for those reasons, it's at least our view that the entry drive shouldn't result in any substantial traffic impact relative to that, you know, for those reasons. It was requested that the truck turning templates within the site be confirmed. That would be provided on the compliance plans if this is approved. And then also a suggestion for the installation of a separate emergency entrance to the site, which was a comment in the letters. We discussed this with representatives of the town and the entrance was not deemed appropriate for this size property and this size building. We also discussed this with SPRAB and that was their conclusion as well, that they didn't feel a second entrance was necessary. In terms of the sidewalks being not provided on the plan along the northwest and southeast facades of the building, that was proposed for a couple of reasons. One is the pedestrian travel path from the middle of that parking bay to the nearest entrance, you basically walk behind about five parking stalls to get out of the parking lot. It's not a far distance. It's rather typical of somebody in a parking lot having to walk at least five parking stalls to get to a sidewalk. And in this arrangement, we actually can have a nice planter bed along each facade of the building in those two locations. And SPRAB also identified, just given the proximity with the windows and people in their offices, really wouldn't be the best use to have extensive sidewalk with pedestrians being able to look into offices and distractions of that walking by the building. That was a lot of their view at the hearing and therefore they supported the plan that we had with the main sidewalks at the front and the rear to convey those pedestrians to the main entrance. We've already discussed the bicycle rack and the expansion. The rack is proposed to be uncovered, again, based on the lacker frequency of use, but the applicant is still providing it and SPRAB was supportive of that as well. In terms of noise, the applicant will follow the existing municipal noise ordinance with regard to site work not starting before 7:00 a.m. And additional screening around the trash enclosure and generator will be provided to supplement what's shown on the plan as requested in the review reports. The applicant will obtain all required outside agency approvals for the project and Mr. Yedlin is agreeable to addressing the minor site plan details in the zoning and engineering letter in Items 1 through 9, 11, 13, 14, 15, and 17, just from a housekeeping standpoint, mostly details, minor plan details and callouts. We did coordinate a site meeting with the fire official to confirm the location of the fire department connection at the front of the building, which is in line with one of the ADA striped areas. It's open and accessible. And we also discussed the configuration of the site access, which was deemed appropriate at that meeting.
Yes. Derek?
Just got a question. Did you say that staff had recommended the start time for construction be 8:00 due to the proximity of the Old Orchard? Did you, did I miss that or did you agree with that or? Okay. Staff recommends 8:00, but, okay. But our report said 8:00 due to the-
We said we would comply with the ordinance.
Which I believe-
Saturdays is 7:00. On Saturdays, it's 8:00 a.m.
Right. I just wanted to clarify that staff had recommended 8:00, sorry.
I'm just reviewing some of the comments here so that we can skip over items that In Mr. Solo's letter, Items 6.1 and 7.1 regarding stormwater compliance and the SPRAB comments A through G are acknowledged and will be complied with. There was a suggestion by the Shade Tree Commission to design and install rain gardens. The project does not include- The project does not include rain gardens. The landscaping has substantial stormwater management improvements, and the plan includes substantial landscaping based on the soil conditions out there, the limited constraints near the building, and the other stormwater measures that we provided relative to stormwater management. The rain gardens is not something that the applicant is ready to pursue as part of the application. As well, permeable paving is not proposed due to the soil conditions and substantial stormwater management facilities as part of the overall design. We discussed the 13-inch elm, which needs to be removed, 8.1E. And the environmental commission comments relative to preserving more trees. We gave careful consideration to preserving as many trees as possible, even looking at root disturbance in close proximity to curbs and driveways and trying to shift things around and also protect what we could. So in terms of further reductions, we don't see really any opportunities for that, but it was part of the design and evaluation process. Maintenance plan will be provided for the stormwater management systems, and the applicant will provide a small organic waste bin within the trash and recycling area for organic waste for tenants of the building. There was a comment about reorienting the building to increase southern exposure based on the site constraints, the presence of trees around the building perimeter. It doesn't warrant, in this case, skewing the building. And we also note that we're taking advantage of an opportunity to provide a PV solar system on the roof for the site lighting. Demolition materials will be recycled to the maximum extent possible and salvaging some building materials for reuse on site. This will serve to minimize landfilling and demolition waste. Unfortunately, at this time in the process, the applicant isn't in a position to agree to a specific percentage as recommended in the environmental commission, but certainly the overall intent as part of this project and the different aspects of this project is something that the applicant is pursuing already, even prior to approvals. The project will include FSC lumber. It will avoid red list materials and incorporate green building materials. In terms of the Traffic Safety Commission comments, one bike rack... There was a request for possibly a second bike rack at the front entrance based upon the use. One bike rack at the rear is sufficient in our view. Sidewalks, we discussed. There was a request to install a sidewalk from the building to the Herrentown Road frontage. The applicant is willing to incorporate that into the plan. And there was a suggestion about possibly relocating two of the ADA stalls at the front of the building to the rear of the building, near the rear entrance, which the applicant will give consideration to and possibly relocate those as part of a revised plan. So that about wraps up the site comments and responses to the review memos. We also have the architectural plans, you know, that you can view too, if you'd like.
Right. Other questions on the site plans? Yes, David?
Yeah. Well, I just... I guess it's more of a comment than a question, but regarding the traffic study or the lack of a need for a traffic study, and specifically in regard to the rear exit onto Mount Lucas Road, I'm just aware, this is a route that I take with some frequency, and making a left turn from Mount Lucas onto, I guess it's Cherry Hill... I'm not sure if it's Princeton Avenue or Cherry Hill at that location, but it can be very challenging. There's a lot of traffic on Cherry Hill and Princeton. And if the only entrance to the site is off of... Oh, actually, this shouldn't really... It shouldn't be relevant. This is a block away from that. Never mind.
And I think that that's one of the positive elements, is that there was an entrance on Mount Lucas, which, you know, vehicles tend to whip through there, as you're aware. So to eliminate that and consolidate it a significant distance from the corner at this location is an improvement.
In terms of the 39 peak traffic count, where did that estimate come from? Because it does seem, if there are 125 parking spaces and it's typical office use, which will tend to be concentrated, you know, at beginning and end of standard workday, it would seem you would have more than 39 trips coming into the site around 9:00 a.m. and leaving around 5:00 p.m. Is that... How did you arrive at that number?
We base that on the trip generation parameter by the Institute of Transportation Engineers for office building use. So that's how we arrived at that parameter.
Yeah. I'd just like to follow that up, but that's one of the things that we raised in our report. The trip gener... Not to get into too much of the minute details, but the trip generation manual provides a couple of different ways to calculate the number of trips. And looking at the, I guess, the fitted equation method, which we looked at as slightly more conservative, we pointed out, you know, it looks like on the order of about 50% more, around 60, 65 trips in the morning, and I think about 100 in the afternoon. Although I... We noted in our report, that seems kind of high side, that, you know, 80-some percent would arrive and depart in a single hour. I think what it boils down to, though, is even if it's, you know, they cited, you know, around 40 trips, if it's 60 or 70, you know, it's still on the order of one vehicle a minute, and we would not expect that there'd be major traffic issues associated with this.
Yes, Milton?
I was going to wait until the end of your presentation because you might discuss it, and I would not have to ask this question, but since we were talking about traffic, I would think that you need to have an idea of the type of office space you plan in order to determine the number of daily trips into and out of the site. Have you thought about the type of office use? Because that certainly will dictate, I think, the number of trips that would be made. Has any consideration been given to that?
Well, in terms, you know, certainly there can be slight differences based on if there's a medical office compared to a regular office. I would offer that, given the building at 25,000 square feet, and Mr. Yedlin might be able to speak to this more specifically, but his present operation, he has quite a few tenants, as I understand, occupying the space of smaller units. So our expectation is that there would be some, you know, diversity in the type of office use on the property. That's not to say that there wouldn't be any medical use, but certainly with 25,000 square feet with his current operation, some diversity in that. So we wouldn't see that as anything significant or substantial.
Yes. Mr. Williamson?
Thanks. I'm just curious. You have four reserved spaces for low emission vehicles. How does... What's the standard for what you define as a low emission vehicle? And how is it enforced that only those vehicles use those spaces?
Well, as part of our plan, we have signage that's indicating that at those particular locations. And then also, I know that I've... Certain vehicles are designated and labeled as low emission relative to whether they're hybrid-type vehicles or not. So I think in terms of enforcement, it's a little bit more on the honor system and enforcement of Mr. Yedlin as the property owner. But certainly, you know, we would hope that people would see this and do the right thing. And we're trying to provide opportunities for that to happen. I'm not sure.
Great idea. I just think, you know, it's something I may want to expand, like, later on, you know, just to...
Yeah.
You know, to basically promote better environmental awareness. It's a great idea.
And I would question whether four spaces is the right number because there are, you know, it's not just hybrid vehicles. Like, I was shocked to see a Subaru on the road a couple of months ago. It's a PZF, partial zero emission vehicle, which, tell me what part of zero is. I'm not sure. Actually, I looked it up, and, you know, under certain conditions of operation, it's a zero emission vehicle, and other conditions, it's not. So the point is that there could be a lot, an increasing number of reduced emission vehicles out there. I mean, if you drive around Princeton, you see, it seems like every other car's a Prius, right? So to have just four spots out of this parking lot, and I don't... You know, if you go to Whole Earth, for instance, they have a smaller parking lot than this, and they've got maybe eight low emission vehicle parking spaces. So I don't see any downside to increasing the number. I would suggest more.
Anyone else? All right. Do you want to move on to the architectural?
Yes. I'd like to call Mr. Frederick Schmidt.
Mr. Schmidt, will you just briefly give your qualifications to the board, please?
Certainly. My name is Frederick Schmidt. May I swear you in, sir? I'm sorry.
Do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I have the four architectural licenses, New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Massachusetts. I hold a master's and a bachelor's in architecture from Cornell University, 1984 and 1987. I've been practicing with my wife since 1988, and we have... We've probably testified in front of 50 municipalities or so. I have not... I don't believe I've been to the planning board in Princeton recently, but we've just finished with the SPRAB twice and the zoning board, successful application at the zoning board.
Thank you. We accept that.
Give me some, Schmidt.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Okay. I forgot the number, frankly. They're up there quite a bit. I think Jim's lost track, but... Slide 39, if the board can take a look, are the architectural elevations of the building, the four sides, of course. Probably, as a preface to, you know, Charlie came to us, and really, the concept of the building is, in a way, as a continuity or continuation of a modest campus or a continuation of his commercial properties there, where they're tied together in some, you know, fairly strong manner, so they hold together visually and functionally, but also that from that, as a starting point, to enhance or, you know, really bring the property to 21st century standards, particularly in terms of some of the environmental criteria and engineering sort of nuts and bolts of the structure. So you'll see on those four views, you know, if you compare those to 1,000 Herrentown, they're similar. We're using the same brick as a base or a field, and then we've had a little more... We've loosened up some of the brick patterns in the surface to give a little... It's a sort of a trompe l'oeil of different readings of bays and some stripes and things, but in general, very similar to 1,000 Herrentown, similar window system, Corneer aluminum, upgraded in terms of their components, but similar aesthetic, tinted windows. It's 28 feet high to the cornice, and then the roof screen is seven feet high to conceal, obviously, the two rooftop units. And, you know, I think the important thing is, again, that it becomes part of Charlie's overall view there of his, of a long Herrentown road as you drive toward 206. Next slide are details of some of the site components, and there are two site sections that are showing the general grading condition and then a cut, you know, if you took a large saw and cut through the structure, both cross and, you know, longitudinally, you would see the relationship also to the saved properties sort of ghosted in. And you can see that while the office structure sits, you know, up a bit, it's not... There's really not a huge slope in either axis. And you can see relative heights to the saved buildings and what we're proposing, of course. So it is a two-story structure. You'll see on the right side of the slide, the typical wall section, which is giving you some indication of the envelope. And I'll go back to the energy things in a bit, but that's indicative of ceiling heights and window heights and things. Dumpster enclosure and two alternates for a sign out on Herrentown Road. I think everyone, certainly on our team, and I think the SPRAB, thought that using the natural stone as a base was a more interesting way to do it than a more brick. But I think that probably might be open to discussion in that regard, but we, you know, we're trying to utilize some of the found elements on the property. Go ahead, Jim, if you can. Thank you. And then the floor plans. It's a 96 by 130-foot structure. It's two stories, as I said. It's steel frame, metal stud and brick veneer building, no basement, no attic components, fully sprinkled, of course, fully handicap compliant. And typical with most speculative structures, you know, the core is, you know, sort of the goal is to make that as compact as possible. So you'll see two stairs and an elevator and common toilet rooms. The elevator and one of the staircases is, in the trade, they call it gurney capable, where you can possibly have medical use as a tenant and, of course, for EMS access, you know. Hopefully, we won't see any emergencies, but if someone took ill, you know, on the second floor or whatever, that person can be brought out by EMS folks. And roof, quick roof plan, there's two rooftop units. There's a couple skylights that aid in the daylighting component of the environmental benefits. And then you'll see the perimeter of the roof screen, and that's restricted by your ordinance, and, you know, we conform to the general size of that. Energy-wise, you know, environmentally, it is, you know, it's well beyond a sort of investment-grade building. It's... The envelope is enhanced quite a bit. It has a white TPO roof, which is... rejects quite a bit of heat, and it will meet the cool roof requirements. The window system, we'd like to use a Corneer Ultra. It's a new product that Corneer's come out with that is thoroughly broken, both the glazing, of course, but also the aluminum components, so that you get less heat transfer, heat loss or heat gain through the actual aluminum. The water usage is ratcheted down quite a bit. All the fixtures are quite efficient in terms of water usage. We have pretty much state-of-the-art HVAC control systems, like a train tracker or a similar control package that allows, or not really allows, but controls the HVAC to be monitored very carefully so that you're not, you know, the equipment is not running wastefully in odd conditions or in the evening or, you know, whatever. Oh, the insulation, we've brought the insulation up quite a bit from the R21, which is a minimum for a commercial structure. I believe it's R24. We'll, you know, we'll spray foam that, so that will... You know, the envelope's very tight. Trying to think... Oh, LED lighting, of course. You know, all the lighting will be LED. And some of the site lighting, as Jim mentioned, the site lighting will be solar-powered at this point. I mean, if we can get... Charlie did do a feasibility study, and, you know, the shade is creating some issues with the, how effective that solar array would be on the roof. And, you know, he's a big proponent of it, but it's just not... It doesn't... you know, he's a big proponent of it, but it's just not, it doesn't seem quite to be as, you know, the payoff won't be there on this particular parcel. I think that's really about all that I have to project for you guys. The office uses, you know, if I can help Mrs. Trotman, you know, typically a building code, both the building code and most municipalities, you know, the offices are defined very generally. So, an architect or an attorney or, you know, whoever may occupy those spaces, in general, the use is very, very similar, you know, in terms of intensity or staff or, uh, medical uses are typically considered a bit more intense and, again, it depends on the practice. So, if you, if you're a specialty group, uh, you know, whether a cardiologist, you know, you have low turnover, of course, where if you're pediatric practice or ENT or something, you know, obviously, the turnover for that practice is much higher. So, it, it's sort of averaged out, if you will, both, both on the construction side and quite often on, you know, on municipal zoning side. So, that, as a speculative building, you're not going to, you know, you won't be able to pin it down too much more specifically than that, I don't believe, but, uh, I don't think Charlie has any real complete target market that he's after, really, at this point. You know, he's willing to go with the flow a bit and see what the market will bear, but he's, his buildings are highly, you know, perfectly maintained and they're well-built and it'll be a high-caliber structure, for sure.
Questions, anyone?
Any questions?
Uh, I just had a quick question about the building height. You know, on the zoning table, it just says less than, that the building will be less than 30, but this seems pretty well-developed. Um, I'm looking at the elevations, it looks like it's 28 feet, but it's not clear where that's measured from and I'm just curious, where does, where does the ordinance measure the height from? Is it, is the average grade around the building?
I believe, you know, Mr. Bridger can correct me when I miss, it's averaged around the perimeter. So, you know, again, commercial construction, you're going to set that pad at a specific elevation and sort of grade away and, you know, it has to hit, unlike a residence, let's say, where you can fool around with the floor elevations, of course, because of, you know, increased access, you know, commercially, you're going to want to set this level at a finished elevation and it's going to run off of there. So, it should be very consistent around the perimeter. I think Jim, I'd have to look at his grading plan, but I'm sure it's very close to concentric. And then, so 28 feet to the top of the parapet, to the, you know, the parapet is like the lip at the roof line that, you know, prohibits things from.
I need to correct you, Mr. Coe. Uh, the height is 29 feet.
Isn't it? No. 28.
Just including to the average grade, it would be about 29.
Oh, well, I'm sorry, yeah.
Including the additional foot, but we did include that on the plan, on the cover sheet.
Oh, okay.
As a calculation to the average grade, so about 29 feet.
Right. Can I just ask about that average grade? I know that the site sort of mounds up in the center, it's higher right in the center than it is on the edges for the most part. Are you going to have to do a certain amount of grading for this?
Yes, there will be an appreciable amount of grading for the site relative to, as you know, the frontage on Mount Lucas does fall at a steady slope and we have a parking lot that is set back significantly from the road, but there will be fill in that area. But for the most part, my recollection is the elevation of the building, where the building is located, is closely conforming to what the elevations are today. It's really the periphery of the site that would require more earthwork and cut and fill in order to level it out in the footprint.
Are we talking about bringing in fill or shifting fill?
Um, definitely moving fill around and I believe that we may need some fill in order to make the earthwork work.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Any other questions? Okay.
I'm sure that completes our presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, then. Any further discussion or questions, anyone?
It's a minor point, but I just want to comment that I like the relocation of the bicycle parking. It's closer to the entry and that's an ideal thing for the bicyclists to not have to walk so far from where they park their bikes, so.
All right. Okay, um, why don't we, there's no more board questions right now, open up the meeting for public comment and I'm going to ask those of you who've come to the meeting and want to speak and someone to come up to the microphone, give your name and address and if you're representing a group, tell us. So, why don't we start? Mr. Peters, is it?
My name is Carl Peters. My office is in Ford's, New Jersey. I'm licensed as an engineer, planner and land surveyor in the state of New Jersey.
Yeah, I don't think that's working very well.
We're not hearing you.
And I want to swear you in, Carl. To the extent you're providing testimony, do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully?
I do.
Thank you.
I'm here representing Mr. Andrew Grossman and his wife, who live at 11 Old Orchard Lane. They've asked me to come and provide some planning testimony to express their concerns about the project. I do have a presentation board and I have some smaller copies in color for the board While we respect the applicant and their professionals and the staff, we have concerns with regard to the, the planning of the site, specifically in two areas. Primarily, the sighting of the building with proximity to the adjacent residential properties and the screening of that building from the residential uses. I note that ordinance section 10B 204 notes that the public interest is affected by specific development characteristics, spatial relationships of the structures and open spaces to existing and proposed land uses. Ordinance section 10B 210, reviewed by committee subsection C, requires review of the relation of the proposed structures to the environment. Under 10B 226, the standards to be used by the planning board and committee in reviewing applications for site plan approval include the relationship of the proposed structures to the environment. And I'll paraphrase slightly, "proposed structures shall be sighted so as to minimize the adverse impact upon the surrounding area and particularly upon any nearby residents and historic features." And items to be considered include building location, height, bulk and shading, as well as the location, intensity, direction and times of indoor and outdoor lighting. Under section 10B 227.6 Design Standards, it notes that new buildings should be integrated in a non-disruptive fashion into a complex balance of building height and scale that now exists. And says, "Careful consideration should be given to the visual impact new buildings will have on the surrounding community." Now, I note in the staff reports, for one, there's no mention of the uses surrounding this property to the south. There's mention that the proposed office building is adjacent to similar office buildings on the west, but no notation to how that's related to the residential uses on the south. In an application composite that's updated, there was a note that the planning considerations note that the new construction will have a much larger impact on the adjacent Old Orchard Lane properties. I didn't see that. Then they'll have more impact on the Old Orchard residences than saved did, but I haven't seen any comments to that regard within the staff reports or BRAB to date. The Site Plan Review Advisory Board makes no mention about the impacts that this development will have on the adjacent residential district. Subsection 10, Screening of Uses, requires in item 10B 304 that between non-residential uses and the lot line that borders a residential use or district, a landscaping buffer strip is required. Under 10B 307, it says that the required buffer strip shall be at least 50 feet in width at all points. The board may increase the width of the buffer strip up to 75 feet. I don't know why that, that hasn't been addressed in the application or the staff reports. Now, I've put together a little bit of a diagram that addresses what our concerns are and primarily, you can see in the blue is the footprint of the proposed building. The yellow line represents the district line between S2 zone to the north and the R2 zone to the south. This property is graded on three sides by commercial districts, to the west by S2, but to the north by S2 and to the east by the Office Research District. On the south is the only of the four sides of this property that's a residential district. When I look at how the building is sighted, I note that the front setback's 133, the west side yard is 119, the southerly setback is only 73 feet. Why is it that the smallest setback is between the commercial use and the residential use? I note also that this building is set back further from Herrington Road than either the one-story building immediately adjacent to it, to the west, or the two-story building somewhat further to the west, which, the one-story building is approximately 60 feet from the street and the two-story building is approximately 90 feet from the street. The rear yard setbacks of those buildings are approximately 150 feet, which is more than twice the setback between the proposed building and the southerly line of the site. We believe that there are many benefits to this project, but the building needs to be moved closer to Herrington Road and further away for the residential uses on Old Orchard Lane. And we believe the board has the opportunity to take an action that will make this project better and less intrusive on the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Peters? Anyone? Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this project? Yes. Okay.
Uh, my name's Joe McGlocklin and I'm a resident of Old Orchard Lane and, um...
Mr. Locklin, to the extent you're providing testimony, do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully?
Yeah, okay, sure.
Thank you.
Um, so, I just wanted to say that Charlie Yedlin's been a good neighbor to us over the years and we appreciate the change from a dog pound to an office building. One of the things we are concerned about, of course, is the landscape screening that everyone's talked about and if, I wanted to reinforce or encourage the board to really consider the 50 mitigated trees to be planted and increase that buffer between Old Orchard Lane and the new building. I mean, if, if maybe one of our members could be, at least, sit in on the landscaping committee to hear what was going on, that would be...
Landscape committee meetings are noticed and they're open to the public, so...
Oh, they are open to the public, great, okay, so that's good. But anyway, we're encouraged that, I'm encouraged that Charlie will do the right thing here, so we're happy to see that change and to see Save leave. The other thing I would just say is that an 8:00 AM start during the week, if there's anything that can be done about that, Charlie, we'd appreciate it, but I understand what you're up against. But, yeah, I just wanted to voice my opinion and go on the record. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name's Matt Weiner. I'm also a resident at Old Orchard Lane. Yes.
So, do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully?
I do.
Thank you.
Yeah. And basically, just to agree with what Joe was saying, we were and remain somewhat concerned about, about light pollution, are very much encouraged by Mr. Yedlin's response to the meeting that we had last week and just wanted to say that that's an encouraging sign for us or for me and for some of us and that we'll look forward to continuing to work with you and hear about the report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Since I sat through this whole meeting, I thought I should at least come up and say hi.
Anyone else? No one? Sure, you've all sat through the meeting, so now's your chance. Okay, no one wants to add anything, I'll close the public portion. And, board members, you've heard what the residents of Old Orchard Lane have to say and do you have comments? Yes, David?
Well, I would like to ask either Derek or Lee to comment on Mr. Peters' quote of the ordinance requiring a 50-foot buffer between residential and non-residential use. You know, what, is that in fact in the ordinance, number one? And number two, what would be the definition of the buffer? In other words, could parking be within that buffer or is it just a building that can't be within that buffer zone?
Well, and I'll just add to that question, how, how wide is the current, I thought it was the landscape buffer, it required a 50, right, so how wide is the current buffer that's planned?
I'm assuming that this is a gas generator and we're beginning to see more of these generators installed. They self-test once a week, once every two weeks or something, in a very annoying manner, especially the large ones for office buildings. And I'm wondering if this is, if you really thought about adequate screening for this size generator that you're putting in? Do you have them at the other buildings at this point?
No, but the, the, the generators must comply and just bear in mind, it's only for emergency use, this is not for normal...
Well, they do self-test though.
Well, I understand and the self-test is actually something that you can, you can decide how frequently you test them. I mean, I have one at my home, it goes on for 20 minutes every week.
Yes, and so does mine and so do all my neighbors. It's quite noisy.
Um, right, but the, the, the generator, you know, uh, the noise that's emitted from the generator does and will comply with the ordinance of whatever the decibel level of the ordinance. And as far as, I mean, we're going to have, I believe, a masonry enclosure, so I think it's, and its location, I don't really think that the testing of the generator or the operation of the generator is really going to have much of an impact particularly on the Old Orchard. I mean, it might be up at your Princeton house or our building, but Princeton house has two large, large generators that occasionally...
That are noisy. Yes.
To follow up on that, um, I am assuming, and tell me I'm correct, that you can dictate the time because they are noisy... the time, because they are noisy, and if they go off at 6 o'clock in the morning, you're going to have a lot of people angry. So, can you determine the time of the test?
Yes, you can program them to go on anytime you want.
Okay, how is the research going over there?
We're looking, because we're wondering, we don't recall it being applied before in that instance, and it's a little confusing.
Can you talk about the four-sided sidewalk versus the two-sided sidewalk now?
Yes, I think that would be very productive. Okay, how many, the question was, how does the Board feel about the sidewalk on all four sides of the building versus the one that's proposed on just two sides? Anyone? Yes, Ms. Ullman?
I guess I, I mean, as I see the issue as put by Brian and the staff, it's a matter of safety to have sidewalks on all sides, even though there are relatively few parking places. The aesthetics of a green hedge and the worry about walking past the windows seems to me to have a lower priority than safety, so I guess I would go along with staff and our consultant in asking the applicant to do sidewalks on all sides.
David?
And I just, I agree with Ms. Ullman about that, and I believe the applicants agreed to put the additional sidewalks in for this PowerPoint slide, so that was one of the points.
Actually, no, we were agreeing with SPRAB.
SPRAB didn't put them in.
Well, I thought I saw a slide that said we were going to do it.
That's why we're discussing this question.
Right. I mean, we've agreed to include a sidewalk that staff had recommended from Herentown Road to the building. We did have a lot of internal discussions about whether it made sense to have a sidewalk on all four sides of the building or not, and, but as a practical matter, there are many locations within the parking lot that essentially you're going to be walking across the parking lot to get to the entrance, front or rear entrance of the building, and may or may not ever get onto a sidewalk as you go toward the building. So, I think we felt that, and SPRAB felt, that there was an opportunity here to have a little bit more green space around the buildings and also a little bit more privacy. I mean, the honest truth is that, you know, I mean, if the Board felt strongly about it, that's fine, I mean, it's not a, it's not a deal breaker. I just think that the buildings at Herentown now, for the most part, don't have sidewalk, there's not, you know, there's parking toward the building, but there's not sidewalks in front of it. People get out of their cars, they walk through the parking lot, and then they get on the last bit of sidewalk or pathway to the entrances of the building.
I'll just preface this by saying, I don't feel extremely strongly about this, but I'm just trying to visualize how I use the parking lot. I mean, I use this parking lot here every day, and I know there's a sidewalk, and I, I mean, it's, it's not direct, because it's on the other side, it would be walking further away from the building to use that sidewalk, but in all the parking lots, you know, this parking lot, the one at the shopping center, normally we're used to walking across a parking lot and not hopping directly on a sidewalk. And, you know, if it lends to less impervious surface, you know, I guess, I would prefer, I think, the two sides, although again, I'm not going to, if the Board feels strongly the other way, I'm not going to stand in the way.
Yes, Jenny?
Yeah, I was, I agree with what Liz just said, the logic has convinced me that walking across five spaces, most of the other spaces in the parking lot that aren't adjacent to the building, you have to walk that much. And I feel like it's kind of their choice, if they want their people to, that are parking in their building, to walk across the parking lot.
Yeah, I have, I don't know, I tend to like sidewalks, simply because they get shoveled in the winter, so, you know, if it's a choice between walking through the slush in the parking lot, walking on shoveled sidewalk, then I vote for more sidewalks, but, David?
And, I mean, I'm going to, again, you know, I think we're breaking down a little bit along age lines, and I'm falling, I'm aligning myself with Gail instead of with Liz and Jenny here.
We're the same age, David.
No, anyway. The point that I want to make is that I'm used to, I am used to walking through parking lots, but I am finding, as I get older, it's more and more difficult to maneuver my car in parking lots where the pedestrians are walking through the parking lot. So, if you think about when you're going to McCaffrey's and you're trying to back out of your parking space, and there's lots of people walking to their cars through the parking area, it's quite move-wracking, and I think that there is a safety issue that would be improved by having these sidewalks on the two sides of the building where they're not present currently.
Well, the other thing is that we've heard that there are going to be peak periods in this parking lot, as opposed to the McCaffrey's lot, which spreads the time people come and go in the slots out, so that people will be, everyone will be walking to his or her car at the same time that everyone is backing out, so...
And it's also only, the worst case is, I think, is there 10 spots along the side, so the worst case is you're walking across four cars. It's not like McCaffrey's where there's a big long line, so the chances of those four cars, people coming out while you're parking, I think are pretty small, you know, probably...
They all leave work at the same time.
I mean, I think other people should weigh in too, because I, it's like two people, two against two.
Julie Capazoli, I just want to respect SPRAB, because I know that they did spend, I'm sure they spent a long time going back and forth on this as well, and I just feel like the green space, you know, any kind of planting near the building is going to be a lot more attractive than just side, you know, concrete all the way around, and people just go directly toward the entrance, they don't use sidewalks, because they take the fastest route possible. So, I just don't think anyone's going to use the sidewalk.
Okay, well, maybe we need a straw vote on this one. How many of you?
Well, let me just ask a question first, if I may. I was under the impression that while the applicant would not be opposed to building the sidewalk particularly if it's going to make or break the deal, I come down on the side of safety always, but equally important to me is whether or not it's going to be used. That's the side I come on. And in my mind, I'm thinking, I'm not going to park there, park a car, and get out of it and walk in front of that car to go to, walk down a sidewalk to get to the building. I'm going to get out of my car and use the shortest route I can to get to the door of that building.
That's because you're young at heart.
Okay, so where does that leave us, number-wise?
Struggle is what I hear.
Hmm?
Struggle.
Okay, all of those in favor of the extra sidewalk? One, two, three, eight, that's four. So, and those opposed? One, two, three, four, five.
Stop holding up two hands.
It sounds like the SPRAB point of view has won out, so, okay, do we have a...
After reviewing the ordinance, I think that there is, that ordinance does apply with the buffer zone, 50 feet. I'm not sure why we missed it, but upon further inspection, it does look like it applies. The Board has the ability to reduce that with screening or fences or if they're present.
Okay, the Board has the ability to reduce it from 50 feet with...
A natural buffer strip is deemed impractical or inappropriate by the planning board, a suitable screening wall or fence may be substituted as approved by the planning board. I know it does have a fence, but I mean, the buffer, the 50-foot buffer is the issue.
And what is it now?
It's approximately 20 to the parking space.
Wait, do you mean the length, it's 20 feet of buffer right now that's planned?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, it sounds like we should ask for a larger, a wider buffer, right?
Mr. Peters, did you want to comment on that?
Yes, I wanted to wait until Mr. Bridger looked at the ordinance rather than say this initially, but I believe that to waive the requirement for a 50-foot buffer requires a variance. Now, certainly, the Board can do that, but the variance needs to be noticed, and the positive and negative proofs need to be made.
Mr. Bridger, is that...
I'll ask Alan on the noticing part. Obviously, he didn't know about the variance or the buffer, because we missed it.
Is this a bulk standard or a design standard? And does it allow...
It's in the parking, it's in the screening of uses in the zoning section, it's, but it doesn't...
300 section.
Hmm?
Zoning runs 200, 20, or whatever, this is in 300 section.
So, you're saying it's a design standard?
Lots of...
We can't hear without the mic.
You're speaking to one another rather than...
Yeah, it comes, doesn't come up that often. I don't know in the past whether we've called it a variance or a design waiver. It's clearly not in the zoning table with just 246, which says that the building has to be set back X feet, and the side yard is Y and the like, this is in the 300 section, more in light of a design standard, but I don't know what we've done in the past, because it doesn't come up often.
Mr. Vatizia, do you want to weigh in on this?
Well, I agree, it's not very clear. It does appear to be sort of in the miscellaneous section of the zoning code.
Do you have it in front of you? Could you read that into the record? I'm not sure we have.
While you're looking for that, let me ask a question, maybe you answered it in your presentation and I just missed it, but why is it less than 50 feet anyway?
So, I think I'm asking the same question as Mrs. Troutman, why is there a disparity between the front setback of this building as opposed to the neighboring buildings, which I think was a question that we heard from the neighbors? I think it's, I think we're asking the same question, Mildred.
Can we start with, is somebody reading into the record, pertinent section? Derek, would you do that? And what section is it?
Reference to, referenced in 10B 304, it's in subdivision 11, screening of uses, landscaped buffer strips required, the side or rear lot of a lot, other than a lot having street frontage, shall be screened by a landscape buffered strip designed in accordance with the subdivision 11 and section 10B 288C, wherever the lot proposed to be improved with A, and then subsection A, non-residential use, and the lot line borders a residential use or district, which I think, I mean, that's a multifamily development, but it is a residential zone, district. And then 10B 307 speaks about same width maintenance, any required buffer strip shall be at least 50 feet in width at all points, except that if a service use of another non-residential use or non-residential use zone, lot, the buffer strip shall be five feet in width at all points if there is a buffer along the lot line, adjacent lot line, and 10 feet if there is no such buffer strip. The Board of Jurisdiction may increase the buffer strip width up to, but not more than 75 feet if the nature of the uses is to be buffered and the existing or proposed site layout requires the installation of a wider buffer strip in order to mitigate the visual noise and light impacts, and there is sufficient room for a wider buffer strip, which will be maintained and kept clean of all debris and rubbish. We did mention in our memo, under the landscape section, item four, landscape plans do not address the requirements for the screening of the parking area, section 10B 288, or the screening between the commercial and residential uses as required by 10B 304. The applicants provide additional details of the proposed fence and evergreen plantings. However, I didn't specifically mention the 50-foot buffer width.
Okay. Mr. Porter, where do you think we are? I want to hear from Mr. Vatizia.
Well, it does appear that this provision is in the zoning code, so a variance relief, if we do seek it, that probably is the correct characterization, though I believe our notice does have the catch-all language about any and all other variances that may be required by the Board as part of its review, so I think we can discuss a variance request tonight for that provision. And I ask Mr...
The notice does say applicant may request any additional approvals, variances, and waivers, as may be identified, where the planning board is necessary to approve and construct the improvements which are the subject of the application. That's, there's one meeting that says that's inadequate notice, that we can talk about whether that's an adequate flag, this type of issue that raises here.
Well, we can put on testimony in support of the buffer that we're proposing, because there are some hardships in order to, for us to comply with that requirement.
Well, I mean, right, I mean, how hard would it be to shift the whole building?
Well, that's what we're going to talk about.
Okay.
Okay. Just to hit a couple highlights on the proximity to the property line and the overall design of the parking and proximity to the adjacent property. The overall intent was to limit the activity on the rear of the building in terms of the amount of parking, vehicle movement, vehicle traffic, because there overall was a sensitivity to the neighboring residences. Therefore, the majority of the parking is located in the front, at the front entrance and on the two sides. There's a small amount of parking in the back in order to reach the 125 requirement, but again, and the loading is there, but it's rather a passive type element since, due to the low frequency of use. So, that was one of the overall intents in terms of the location, to focus the more intensity of the use at the front and at the sides of the property, which is the way that this site would function. Additionally, we had a site constraints relative to the stormwater management basin and soil conditions on the property, and that being the permeability of the soils and the soil conditions where the proposed stormwater detention basin is. As you can see with the birmingham of the basin, as well as the retaining wall, which is inside the basin, there are volume... the basin, there are volumetric requirements in order for us to achieve and comply with the stormwater ordinance. So everything is very tightly designed in that front corner. There would be some significant impacts to the drainage and the stormwater management if the parking was shifted further to the north because you would impact that stormwater basin and there is limited flexibility on where that can go on the site. So that is a site constraint that we're dealing with. In terms of shifting the building another 20 or 25 feet, which is really the length of a parking stall or a little bit more, at 25 feet, we didn't see that as a substantial distance that would result in any appreciable increase in what the residences would see when they're located 178 feet away from the building and 220 feet away and 148 feet away from the building. That also being said relative to the scope, extent, and building mass with the height of the building, as Mr. Peters testified to, that the building height at 20 feet basically corresponds to a building setback to height ratio of 2.6, which compared to your ordinance and other requirements is well over what a lot of building to setback ratios are required in the zone. So yes, it is 73 feet, you know, but from an impact standpoint relative to where the residences are located, you know, we offer that that impact is not substantial. Additionally, with the 20-foot landscape buffer setback that we're showing on the plan, we're also indicating that the enhanced landscape buffer would both span this particular property and the old orchard property because we are proposing to utilize and actually enhance and plant the old orchard property along that property line and below it with the mitigation plantings as part of the enhanced buffer where there are no residences located. So, you know, the net effect would be in excess of a 50-foot buffer from the non-residential units or in excess of that, and that would still exist, noting that with the layout as you see here, 20 feet is located on the subject property and then the remaining width would be on the adjacent property, which would be planted as part of the enhanced landscaping
Just a minute, Mr. Peters. When you talk about planting on the old orchard property, is that on top of that easement that goes through there? Isn't there, at one point, there was some sort of an easement that went along there?
It may be a utility easement. I'd have to reference the tax map.
Yeah, because it would be sort of difficult to put major...
There are existing trees there and there are buffer plantings and trees. If you look at the site plan, that were planted to serve the buffering of the save property previously. So that same mechanism would be enhanced with this proposed in excess of a 50-foot buffer traversing the common property line.
Okay, Mr. Peters, your head.
If this variance is able to be considered tonight, if the notice, if that language in the noticing is sufficient for this series of a variance request in my mind, then I don't think the positive and negative proofs have been made. Number one, the issue about the parking being on the wrong side of the building, that's a non-issue because the ordinance says it's a buffer zone between the parking and the adjacent residential use. To come here tonight to say, well, we should get a variance for the reduction of the buffer from 50 feet to 20 feet, 40% of what your ordinance requires when the applicant could ask for other ordinance relief such as reduce the number of parking spaces, make a smaller building, there are a variety of things you could do that would not reduce the protections of the adjacent homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, isn't there a buffer on the adjacent?
Mr. Porter, perhaps we should read this provision together because it allows for a reduction if there's a buffer on the adjacent property. So I think there's been testimony that there is a buffer on the adjacent property so that together it meets the requirements.
Well, I believe that was when the adjacent property was commercial though, that specific provision, if I'm remembering correctly from what Derek read.
But may I?
Yes.
I might be confused, but I thought we were trying to determine whether or not it was hardship that you were asking for the variance and not just the other thing, you know. We have to determine now whether or not it is a hardship in order to approve the variance. I'm not sure about the stormwater as was just explained to us by the engineer, but parking, the fact that more parking is in front of the building as opposed to the back of the building, to me, does not constitute hardship. So if hardship is what we are trying to determine in order to approve or not approve the variance... Could I hear it, please?
I think Mr. Peters' comment was...
I heard Mr. Peters.
They could be asking, they could reduce the size of the building, they could ask for variance on the number of parking spaces which would allow them to create the buffer. Let's, instead of sitting here just waiting, why don't we take a break and come back in about two, three minutes, everybody? Okay.
Right. Where is it? If you got rid of those 19 stalls, it would be about 3,800 square feet. Getting rid of those stalls is about 3,800 square feet. Right. I think we need to check the issue chart, kind of do it on the fly. Try to work out a plan. Figure out what we want to do. Try to get them to... Is there any way that we can complete what we've done tonight? And when we come back, have it just be like amended condition or...
No.
No, I think we've put enough thought and care into the project. Can we... 14. Doesn't have percent. We might get a... Hey, you know what? Maybe we do a few more compacts and we have a few more stalls here and there, do some I'll look at it. All right. Is it possible?
I've got a general...
Like, yeah, maybe other issues. Any outstanding issues? Right. They didn't mark yet, we covered our bases, so we're talking about doing...
Okay, if we could come back into order and decide what we're going to do at this point, Mr. Lutizia, do you want...
Yes, Madam Chair, upon consultation with my client, I think the course of action we'd like to pursue is to ask for an adjournment to your next available meeting so that we can evaluate this issue and perhaps come back with some revisions.
Okay.
To the extent that additional variance relief may be required with these revisions, we'll notice for safe. Okay?
All right. Is that acceptable to the board?
Yes.
And we have your extension to whenever?
Yes. What date are we...
Do you want December 1 or December 8? We have two meetings in December.
It's going to be December 8. I'm sorry, December 1 is the meeting.
Okay.
And I'll need the extension until December 2?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
We hope you can work with the neighbor and work out an arrangement that is, gives them the buffering they require.
Yes. We will do our best.
With a small "b."
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, board members. Is PDS here?
Mr. Lutizia, the board wants to talk about what it can do in the next hour because and we certainly can take jurisdiction...
Yeah.
On the PDS application, but...
Is the board willing to stay for another hour? We could maybe get through some of the presentation.
The question is whether that makes for an orderly presentation in terms of the board members who are here and at the next meeting, we don't like to have...
Can you give me another few minutes? I'm going to talk to my other client.
Thank you.
I walked through Woodfield Reservation last weekend.
Well, they're going to ask him, why are you wasting so much time on the first one? Kamalik, is that right? Mr.?